Meeting for Tuesday, October twenty first, twenty twenty five. I want to say that again because of starting morning. Good evening and welcome to this meeting for October twenty first, twenty twenty five. If we could please stand for the pledge. And kid, if you can come up there. Alright, next one. Jason, why again? Well, if you start, okay, I got a couple more coming up first.
Okay, the whole.
And that's ready? Go ahead, you start. Good job, thank you.
Yeah, A plus. Ten out of ten.
Alright, roll call please.
Mr. Greitzi. Mr. Hanes. Mr. Jackson here, Mr. Bock.
Here. Finalization of the agenda.
The agenda is final, Mr. Dentis.
Thank you. I'd recommend that the Board of Education approve the written summary of the regular minutes for the meetings on September second, twenty twenty five, and September sixteenth, twenty twenty five.
Who?
Saxon, second one with that names. Roll call please.
Mrs. Saxon.
Yes.
Mr. Hanes.
Yes.
Mr. Greitzi.
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Rock.
Moving to superintendent, transators report.
Okay, excellent. I would like to introduce Bill Sherman and Claire Bank. Bill from Hammond Construction and Claire from TDA Architecture, who will share with us an update on the exciting construction project that hopefully all of you have taken notice of.
Alright, well, thank you so much for having us here tonight. We're excited to share some of the progress that has been made from a design standpoint and from a construction standpoint. More of the journey this night is going to be presented by Phil as far as instruction because it's out there and it's happening quicklyish at this point, so. Think here in a minute.
It can, it would see the present things.
It's okay. If you wanted to go through that. So we all know why, I guess we have a new purpose. Okay, a new school. And you all, of course, were thankfully supportive of it. And I don't know what's happening. Okay, thank you. Oh, sorry. So, so we're addressing issues, of course, of safety, making it more safe, giving more space, so a lot more space both for the high school and for the transportation center. And then providing excellent spaces, giving a lot more opportunity for different types of programs to this facilities. So we're sharing some completed work, some, some meetings and discussions that have been happening. The groundbreaking, of course, occurred, and then we'll go through construction updates and cover next steps. So some of the design activities, design really at this point is wrapping up because we need to get the high school documents up. So that that construction can really move forward. So the GMP, Base Mission GMP, guarantee maximum price, that is currently in review with Hammond Construction. And then the final construction documents for the new high school will be put together by the design team and they will be issued in early December for everyone, which we're excited about. Those are just pictures of people making. And then we've had some more engagement with the staff recently. This is the construction leadership team, which has representatives from all of the different departments present. And the focus of the most recent discussion was around the furniture fair that we had last year, showing what students and staff had selected to occupy those different rooms. And this is just one example. This is man classroom, but there's a lot of different spaces in the building and they're all outfitted a little bit different ways. So it was a good discussion with staff. We have our homework cut out for us as far as completing some of the documents there and furniture bids later than the rest of the building. And then this was just a really exciting moment. Hopefully, some of you here in the audience were able to attend, but August fifteenth at the Ranger Rally, we had the high school groundbreaking. So these are some of the pictures from that day. And a lot of progress has been shot on site that day. And I think at this point, I'm turning it over to.
Thanks, Blair. Good evening, everybody. I want to start by, first of all, my name's Bill Sherman. I'm at Hammond Construction. Want to start by just revisiting the overall timeline on these projects. And you see that on the screen here, the Transportation and Maintenance Center, that's the yellow bar. And we are nearing completion on episodic now. That's on the north side of campus. I'll have some photos of that in a moment here. We will be done with that in January for that build, that new complex will be done. We're hoping actually to actually beat that by a few weeks and enable December, Christmas, winter recess moving for the school district, that new space. Concurrent to that, we have been preparing the site for, if you can go back real quick, sorry, Paul. I gave you, I gave it a hand motion. We have been preparing the site for the new high school and that's, that's wrapping up here. We'll be done early next spring. And then the long dark blue bar, that is the, that represents the construction of the new high school. That will start in early spring and around March and be complete in summer of twenty twenty eight. And then afterwards, for the balance of the summer and into early fall, we'll be demolishing the existing high school. This is an aerial shot of a new transportation and maintenance center. I'm sure many of you have driven up Ranger Way and have seen it from ground level. This is a bird's eye view. The building is essentially divided between the transportation services, all the bus drivers and mechanics and transportation department. That's on the left side of the building. As you see on the screen, and on the right side are all the maintenance staff. And then the large parking area, and it's currently in the base course of asphalt. So this, this slide was taken a couple of weeks ago, but that's, that will house all of the buses. Little different perspective, same facility. You can see the academic center in the background. This illustrates the north side where all the, the bays are for the buses and maintenance vehicles using that space. Thanks, Paul. And then a wider view of the overall campus. This summer, we completed some new parking lots along, we're close to the Ranger Way side of the campus. And those are open and available for parking and are being very utilized. In addition to that, we have created some temporary parking along Bainbridge Way, or on Bainbridge, I should say. And that's just a gravel lot. It's primarily used by students and for overflow parking. And then you can see in the background, the dirt on the screen, if you will, that is the area that's comprising where the new high school will sit. In February, we are going to actually, if you can go back just one slide. In February, we're actually going to take some of that temporary lot. So while it's currently used for student, the entire, the entirety of it is used for student and overflow. We'll take the eastern half of it shown shaded in, in pink, if you will. That will be for contractor parking. And it will be fenced off. There'll be a fenced barricade between that parking area and the student parking. And then all of the construction staff will then cross pedestrian, will cross it across the existing driveway over to the construction site itself. The construction site itself, we've done quite a bit of work the last few months here. We have removed the existing parking lot. We've put in a lot of underground utilities. We've actually done the rough grading and you can see there, it's hard to see, but there are actually some varying elevations out there because the new high school will have some elevation variance to it, minor, but it will drop in elevation over, over the expanse of the building from Bainbridge Way down to the existing high school. That kind of follows the existing contours. You can actually start to see the, the shapes of the building. You can see the gym spaces, the large flat areas where those will lay out the new auditorium on the north side, and then the academic spaces are closer to Bainbridge. And you, when you look at the building as a whole overlaid on that site, while it's a very large site, it's a very large building. So it will really fill that site. So that's the outline overlaid onto the site itself. All the various areas of the building, the existing maintenance building is shown at the top right of that screen. That will be demolished in the spring once the, the maintenance staff moves into their new facility because the new building will actually come right up to it. So it's a large building. We're excited to get going. And then last slide here, I'll turn it back over to Claire, just an overall campus perspective. When all things are done, which will be fall of twenty twenty eight, when the existing high school is demolished and returned to athletic fields. This gives you a perspective of what the overall campus will look like.
And then just really briefly, next steps. We'll continue to post updates to the website throughout the project. We'll also continue to come to these for updates. So you can go out there, I guess. And then the GMP will be negotiated soon and the high school bid documents will be released, which really will kick off then the building construction happening starting in spring. So with that, thank you.
Yeah, there any board, have any questions at all?
I have a couple of questions. So one question is, we got a fabulous tour today of the what's existing now in the transportation maintenance facility. Are we doing it in public tours before that building is completed or when it's completed? So that's one question.
It's a good question. We don't have anything scheduled as of yet, but we will actually take that into consideration and look at different opportunities to do exactly that. It's very suggest.
And then my other question is regarding parking. When you take over that student lot or partial, partial of the part of that student lot, and then maintenance, transportation, parking right now, where, where does buses? How is that going to play out?
Well, that's also a good question. The, the beauty of completing the existent, the new transportation maintenance center is we can vacate where all the buses are being stored currently, which is on the east side of the site. Close enough hits. So that, that will be available then for, for vehicle parking. So while we'll lose a proportion of the existing overflow lot, we'll gain where the exist, the parking area that's south of the tennis courts where the existing buses.
But can I just add just quickly to that? I think that's a really good question. The staff for the high school are currently parked almost directly south of the academic center. Media center, actually. They will shift over to the pit's parking lot, which will then leave that lot free and clear for students. So we'll actually have some additional parking for students when that shift occurs. So we're pretty excited about that, even though right now we have a plethora of parking far more than we anticipated. So we're in really good shape. So thank you for all of that. Thank you.
Just a bunch of nice, right, you know, right your way and the police station, the bike station, it just all ties together really nicely. I think the community has a lot of reason to be proud, right? And this spring, it's going to be pretty tremendous, same for the high school, the whole university campaign. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you both.
Um, we are going to move into the recognition portion of the twenty five, twenty six school year. And I'm actually going to ask Mrs. Jenpin Zone to join us to recognize our students at ECLC. Just different than we've asked.
Wonderful. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's so wonderful to be here to recognize our smallest Rangers. They've been working so hard. And we have some really good ones to share with you tonight. First, I'd like to call up Jackson, that's her name. And as he makes his way over here, I have to tell you, every day when you're in school and you see Jackson, he just spreads joy everywhere. There's just so much happiness and he has a big smile on his face. And I know all the students love having you there. He's also a big hit and he's, he's his friend outside. We're so wonderful. Yeah, Jackson, I don't know if we're going to talk about. So Mrs. Deeks is Jackson's teacher and she wrote a whole letter all about you. She said so many wonderful things. She said, you're so strong. And you're so capable. And she said, even though she'd only known you a couple of months now, she's so impressive. She said, you have great independence and a positive attitude and you embody exactly what it means to be Ranger. She said, you're a good friend. You try everything at school and you always work hard. And she can't believe how happy you are every day. Are you happy to be your friends all the time? And he's greeting everybody, has a big smile on his face and his attitude is so positive in the classroom. She said, your attitude is contagious. That means it spreads to everything. So congratulations, Jackson. You're our student of the month. Well, yeah, go ahead.
And the other students comes up parents, if you wouldn't mind sticking around, we'd like to get pictures of the kids together as a group. We'll take a brief recess after we recognize all the students and staff.
We have one more student to celebrate here in kindergarten. We have Alison Sidivee. You have a perfect shirt on. It says V. And Mrs. Bykowsky is Alison's teacher. And she said that you have been following all of our schools. And she said, you do this every day. She said, you are, you be safe. Is that true? You practice being safe. And be responsible and be respectful every single day. She said, you're a positive role model to your friends. That means you're always showing them exactly what to do. And she said, you participate, you raise your hand a lot. And she always puts forth her best effort every day and you treat others with kindness. And she said, we're so proud to celebrate you and your outstanding character. Okay, congratulations. Yeah. And now I'd like to welcome Mrs. Julio from Liberty.
Good evening, everyone. Okay. Tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing two students from Liberty. First, we have Lily Zoray. You want to wave with me if they try?
This is Lily.
Lily is a first grader in Mr. Ditzler's classroom. And Mr. Ditzler wrote that Lily has done a nice job becoming a leader in our classroom. She goes above and beyond to participate in class and be a role model to others. This is a great way to show respect and show ownership of her learning. Keep up the great work, Lily. We are very proud of you. This is Finn. Finn Arbogast is a second grade student at Liberty. He is in Mr. Lavalia's classroom this year. And Mr. Lavalia wrote that Finn has been an awesome student since the first day of school. He listens well, participates, is engaged in the entire school day and is kind and helpful to his classmates. He's a wonderful example of what it means to be Ranger Strong. Way to go, Finn. Oh, and Mr. Sullivan, you were.
Good evening, everyone. This, these are always the best word we need because interact gets to celebrate four students. So bear with me, it will be here about thirty minutes. Our first student of the month is Kate Walsh, from third grade purple studio. Come on up, Kate. Kate was recognized by her classmates for her outstanding teamwork. She consistently demonstrates cooperation, kindness, and a positive attitude in group activities and everyday interactions. Kate actively contributes to group goals, helps classmates with tasks and challenges, and fosters a positive environment by offering encouragement, making her a wonderful team player, for ability to share ideas, listen to others, and lend a hand when needed, truly embodies the spirit of teamwork. Earning her this well-deserved honor. Thanks for being Ranger Strong. Congratulations, Kate. Aspen Hicks, fifth graders are next student of the month. Aspen consistently demonstrates a positive attitude and takes initiative to seek out new opportunities for growth. She shows great responsibility for her learning and is always willing to help others. Aspen is respectful, thoughtful, and friendly towards her peers. Keep up the excellent work, Aspen. Congratulations.
Awesome, thank you.
Next up is Leah Meister. Here's some great things to say about you, Leah. This school year, Leah has demonstrated all Ranger Strong attributes. She has demonstrated service by showing kindness and friendliness to all peers and staff. She is always smiling and spreading happiness. She demonstrates teamwork by working together with peers and teachers. She always demonstrates respect by using her AAC device to ask questions and include everyone. Leah takes ownership of her work and any group that she's in. Leah demonstrates necessity by advocating for what she may need or what others around her may need during the school day. Leah is always achieving her goals and sets high expectations for herself. She is a pleasure to work with and it has been an honor to watch her grow and blossom. Congratulations.
Got it.
And last, but not least, Rainya Sala, seventh grader. Rainya is an outstanding student who demonstrates hard work and dedication in everything she does. She consistently asks thoughtful questions in class and approaches each day with a positive attitude and a bright smile. And she hasn't stopped smiling since she walked in. She truly embodies what it means to be Ranger Strong, showing responsibility, respect, and perseverance both in and out of school. She's a wonderful role model and friend to her peers, always ready to lend a helping hand and encourage others to do their best. The seven blue team is proud and honored to have her in the studio this year. Congratulations. And I will turn it over to Ms. Durkin, our HTA.
I am very happy to be able to be here this month and recognize two of our outstanding learners at our HTA. Our community value this month was innovation and both of our learners were nominated by their coaches for being innovative and demonstrating that community value. So our first nominee is Azizana Sanchez. And Aziz was nominated by her sixth grade GLA teacher, Coach Swainco. And this is what Coach Swainco had to say about Aziz. Azizana has had amazing start to the school year. She exemplifies our Ranger Strong values in so many ways. She is always kind and respectful towards her coaches and peers, which helps contribute to the positive learning environment. Azizana is responsible, hardworking, and helpful. She collaborates well with others and is creative, innovative, and never afraid of tackling challenging tasks. I'm so proud of you, Aziz. Keep it up. Our next learner of the month is Brendan Holland. Brendan is an eighth grader at RHTA and he was nominated by Coach DiCicchio. Coach DiCicchio said, this month, I'm happy to recognize Brendan as my learner of the month. He brings a sharp sense of humor and quick wit that adds energy and positivity to our classroom community. More than that, he's truly stepped up this year. He's been advocating for himself, staying focused on his goals, and consistently putting learning first. Brendan is thoughtful, engaged, and clearly invested in his growth. Our community value this month is innovation, and Brendan really brought this to life during our egg drop. His group's design showed creativity, strategy, and just the right amount of control chaos. Overall, Brendan has shown strong leadership, both in class and throughout eighth grade as a whole. It's been awesome to watch him grow as a leader. Keep it up, Brendan. You're setting the bar high. Thanks for being Ranger Strong.
One, two, three. Awesome.
And now I'd like to introduce Ms. Pigna to share our student of the month from the high school.
Alright, so I am very excited to introduce Mr. Gus Dada as our first student of the month this year. Gus's teacher that nominated him said that she enjoys having Gus in AP US History this year, that you are very respectful to both her and your fellow classmates, and that you are very dedicated to class and a dedicated teammate. So a little bit about Gus. Gus is a tenth grade student athlete. He's committed to academic and athletic excellence. He is always striving to improve in the classroom and grow as a learner. He competes in football, basketball, and track. And he brings dedication and teamwork to everything he does. Outside of sports, Gus is an active member of the Fellowship of Christian Athletes in Champions for Life, where he's working to build his leadership skills and strong values. His favorite subject is math. And in his free time, he enjoys fishing and snowboarding, and he is hoping to go to the Ohio State University to pursue a career in medicine or a science-related field. So congratulations, Gus. And our second student of the month is Ms. Kate Young. She couldn't be here tonight. She has a good reason. Kate, teacher that nominated her, said that Kate is one of the most outgoing, friendly, dedicated, and dedicated students that she has this year. She's creative and passionate in everything she does, and she is a ray of sunshine. So Kate is a senior. Kate is a twelfth grader that is set to graduate this May. She is the president of our drama club, and she pours her time and energy into rehearsals, academics, and fitness, which is where she is at tonight. She's at drama club rehearsal. She is currently balancing a full schedule with determination in heart, she said. Her favorite class this year is AP Literature, not only because it's filled with close friends, but also because it's helped her discover a surprising appreciation for poetry. Outside of school, Kate enjoys reading, writing, and creating personalized art for her friends. She's passionate about wellness and plans to attend Bowling Green State University, where she hopes to major in dietetics and business. And her ultimate goal is to lead a healthy, fulfilling life and maybe even afford a house someday. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations to Kate.
And now I would like to introduce Ms. Kay Posdeller, Director of Human Resources, who will recognize two of our amazing staff members of the month.
Great, thank you. I always have the privilege to announce two of our staff members who are very deserving of our over six hundred staff members in the district. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to congratulate all those students in attendance, and then certainly congratulate our two staff members for their service. Our first winner this evening is Ms. Alicia Veroni. So Alicia was hired in June of 2023 as an intervention specialist assigned to the preschool in ECLC. Prior to coming home to NRCS, she worked for the Beaver Creek City Schools as a preschool intervention specialist for five years. She was a nominee for their district's Outstanding Educator of the Year Award in 2023, and she was named a preschool teacher of the year for that district in 2122. You know, one thing about preschools is that it's highly competitive, and so to find a really good preschool teacher is sometimes very difficult. I remember Jackie and I interviewing Alicia one night in June after school was let out, and we offered her the job on the spot. We had done our homework, and we knew she was a graduate of the North Bridgeville City Schools, and we thought we were going to grab her that night, and she told us that she had another interview that she had to go to. It happened to be in County County, and I was like, oh. So I did a little dance when she called me to accept the position the next day. So we're thrilled to have her, a colleague of hers had this to share. Alicia Veroni is an exceptional educator who goes above and beyond in every aspect of her role. As both a dedicated teacher and an instructional leader, Alicia models excellence in teaching and learning each day. She is always willing to do whatever it takes to support her students and colleagues, providing guidance, encouragement, and practical support wherever needed. Alicia advocates passionately for her students, ensuring their needs and voices are heard. She thoughtfully organizes and models curricular components that strengthen instruction within the preschool team. Her hard work, professionalism, and positive attitude inspire those around her and make her an invaluable member of our school community. Congratulations, Alicia. Thank you. Our second employee this evening is our non-certified staff member of the month is Ms. Shannon Desche. Shannon was hired as a paraprofessional instructional aide in August of 2024 at the Academic Center. In addition to her employment responsibilities, Ms. Desche has been an active parent volunteer for our Ranger Band. Shannon was nominated by a teacher who had this to share. Shannon goes above and beyond for our students every single day. She knows their birthdays, their interests, their favorite snacks, you name it. In the classroom, I truly don't know what I would do without her. She anticipates what I or the students need even before I have to ask, and her ability to be so in tune with the students' needs is nothing short of incredible. Beyond the classroom, Shannon attends every marching band event to capture sweet moments with her camera, ensuring our students' experiences are remembered and celebrated. Her love for the North Bridgeville City Schools is evident, and she is an irreplaceable part of our community. Personally, Shannon is one of the very best paraprofessionals that she has ever had the privilege of working with, and she said that she's worked with many amazing paraprofessionals throughout the years. North Bridgeville and our eighth grade team are truly better because of her. Congratulations, Shannon, and thank you for the positive energy that brings to that. And I would just like to thank all of our parents and our staff who have nominated a staff member. It's so nice to hear great things about our staff and our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, congratulations to all our students and staff of the month. Mr. Sullivan nailed it. This is our favorite meeting. This is our favorite time of the meeting is recognizing all our amazing students and staff. So we're going to take a brief recess so we can get some more pictures, some group pictures, and feel free to come back and join us for the rest of the meeting, or you can bail and enjoy the beautiful weather outside. Do you have a report out of Ranger High Tech Academy?
So just for the audience perspective, we do actually have audience members. That's awesome. And we also have some people online, so every month we have a report out from each of our buildings, just so not only the Florida triple, so our public has an idea of what's happening in each of our buildings. Because this year, we are kicking off those presentations with Ms. Durkin.
Thank you. And actually, all the other administrators, they have their admin teams that come with them. So my team decided they were going to come support me today. But I am very excited to share with you some of the things that we've been doing at Ranger High Tech Academy and some of the things that we're really proud of this year. Starting off, just to look at the academic area, we did get another five-star report card, which is our second in a row. We're very excited about that, and we pride ourselves on having really high academic standards in all that we're doing, even though it seems like we're having fun. Then, when we're looking at what we are really proud of this year, one of the things that we're very proud of is our collaboration with community partners. We work with many community partners, businesses, organizations, local community members and governments, and they all collaborate together with our learners to make a really robust learning experience for our kids. This is our ninth year that we are actually open at our HTA. And throughout the last nine years, we have had a lot of different community partners work with us in one way or another, and we try to make in those relationships and build those stronger. So we're excited about that. We are really excited this year because our learners have been just taking over the outdoor learning spaces at our HTA and making it their own and being very proud of that. So I'm going to share that in the next slide, I believe. And then the last thing that we're really proud of is our community values. In STEM, one of the things we need for our STEM designation is to focus on those STEM community values. As you heard when I did our learners of the month, we always pick one to focus on. So we're very proud of how the kids are taking those community values and embodying that. Thank you. Oh, I forgot. This is something that is kind of unique to our building, which we are excited about. We did join the Team Tressle Fitness Challenge this year, and the learners in grades three through six have these goal books, and they set goals, and then they select from different healthy activities such as healthy eating, getting enough sleep, exercise, reducing screen time, and then they have to reach certain levels so they can get bronze, and then they move on to their silver medal and then their gold medal. We are going to be doing round two, which is going to start in February, and we're just kind of wrapping up round one now. So we are excited to say that we are participating in doing that at our HTA. And then here are our student community values that I was talking about. Some of them are collaboration, communication, innovation, inquiry, entrepreneur spirit, individual accountability. But the thing that I really like in the posters that I showed you here, these are what the kids created because they are not only just hearing that these are our community values or not just recognizing them in our Ranger Strong assemblies, but they are also really diving into what does this mean, what does this mean for us, and what does this look like in our classrooms? And here's our outdoor education spaces. And so what they're really working on here, that picture down there of the woods, it was like you would not believe the difference between the way it looks in this picture and the way it was before that. Those fifth graders went out there, and they cleared it, and they leveled it, and they made these walking trails through the woods that are able for anybody to come and utilize. They worked really, really hard, and that was very exciting. And now what's part of their PBL is they're making posters about the ecosystems and the different animals in the different environments around the school. So some of the things that they have been really working on are the raised garden beds, the compost bins, and the rain barrels, utilizing those walking trails and creating those walking trails, the beehives, having an ecosystem walk on our property, and then we had a bat house donated that they are also putting out. So they have, the third and fifth grade have really been taking ownership of this and making this a really nice space. Okay, so last year, I was able to share with you some of the project-based learning units that we have done in fifth grade, in sixth grade, and in eighth grade. So this year, I would like to showcase our third grade and our seventh grade. So this is our Monarch Butterfly Lifecycle Unit that our third grade is working on, and part of this was their outdoor learning spaces that they were doing with creating a pollinator garden. But they were really working on why is the monarch butterfly's survival important to our HTA environment? And as part of this, they worked with the station director from the Kelly's Island Field Station, and they've been working closely with the North Bridgeville Garden Club to really find out what we need, the lifecycle of the butterfly, how to spread milkweed, why it's important to have those type of plants and to create a pollinator garden. And actually, they sent me with some of their handouts and milkweed seeds for our board members that they shared with our community today. All of these are different. Your PBLs are, products are a little bit different. Thank you. So they, third grade wanted me to share that with you.
And there's seeds in there.
And there's seeds in there, yes. So they harvested the seeds and shared them with the community.
Springtime, I take it.
Does it say on any of their?
It says sow the seeds anytime between late fall and mid-winter before the drought freezes.
Oh, thank you. They are much better at that than I. And then we'll go on to our seventh grade. So our seventh grade, this actually was from the end of the year last year. They really were working on a PBL that was looking at the daily activity and the impact that we have on our environment and especially our water systems. So they collaborated with a bunch of different organizations. Seventh and eighth grade really dive into those careers. They dive into elevating that learning outside of the classroom, and what does this look like in businesses? What does this look like in the community? What impact can we make? And they worked with Drink Global, Drink Tap, Ohio State University, ODNR, the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District, French Creek Water Treatment Plant, an organization called Trout Unlimited. And they really worked on many aspects of how the things that humans do impact the water. And so one of the things that they did was they raised trout in the classroom, and then they released them in Rocky River Reservation. And another thing that they did was participate in local advocacy events such as beach cleanup days. So they kind of selected what things they wanted to participate in and what they could do to make a difference. So those are just two examples of some of our grade levels and different project-based learning units that they do. We, on average, have probably four or five project-based learning units that are occurring at each grade level throughout the year. So we have a lot that goes on, and they're always looking to see what they can do to make a difference in this world, to make a difference in the community. And that was all that I have to share today, which if you have any questions.
Questions other than just a statement that I think this is wonderful, these experiences, this immersion is really great.
Thank you.
Something to share with the kids. They can be the eyes in the community. Stormwater runoff. Important that nothing's introduced into the storm sewer system. That goes right to like Gary.
Absolutely.
So they can be the eyes in the community when they see somebody pouring something down a sewer. They can say, "Mom and Dad, we broke this. Because we can get out in front of it and stop that from making a system." The impact is huge, but makes the lake here.
Oh, absolutely. And they definitely tried to do whatever they can to make a difference and change, you know, practices that are not good for our environment.
I can lose in nine years.
I know. It's gone so fast.
Yeah, it really has gone fast. It has grown tremendously. And I'm just, I'm confusedly impressed by the learning that's happening.
I have a question. So for the sea, for the arts.
Yeah.
What are some things, I know I'm totally going on the spot, but what are some things that you're doing at our HTA with the arts?
Absolutely.
Same expertise, you know, the partnerships.
So all of our project-based learning units, they also integrate arts into what they're doing. So we have an integration time where our art teacher, our tech teacher, our music teacher work with the different grade levels, and they plan together to make sure that everything's being integrated. Our music program is very strong, and they do a lot of things. For example, they were just working on sound and music in fifth grade. They went to the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, and then they're going to be creating instruments and sound gardens for our outdoor learning environment, which is really neat. But they also work really fleetly with the nursing homes in the community to really ensure that we're not only just within our school, but that we're bringing joy to other people. So they'll interview the members of the nursing home and see what type of music they like, what they enjoyed, and then they bring those to them in the concerts, which is really exciting. We work closely with in education also to partner up with artists and things like that. Within our art fabrication program, we actually do a lot of work with batteries and trying to bring to light some of their ideas and their thoughts, and, you know, bringing products, collaborating, interviewing the other kids, getting their opinions on what they like and what they'd like to see, and then actually using the equipment. And they were sewing, and they were doing pressing, and they were doing flowers, and all kinds of. And yes, they had, and they were making all kinds of things. And just really being able to integrate all of those different practices. So it's not just that technical, but it's that art and creativity aspect into everything that they do also.
Great.
So you're in a pollinator garden. Is that something that you donate donations in the springs? Or people like myself separate all the perennials and shares the days these calls.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And Susan, all that can separate it every spring. That can be donated at the perennials.
Yes, they are actually even growing this space because we do have quite a bit of space there. So not only are they having it within their raised garden boxes, but they're growing it along their pathways that they've created as well. So absolutely.
Butterfly bushes, anything that's.
Absolutely. I love it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
And I think you have some announcements.
Yeah, some announcements. So it seems that our advocacy that we've requested the community to do may be helping our district. The Ways and Means Committee passed out of their committee a bill that would reimburse North Bridgeville City Schools $6.7 million that we would have otherwise lost based on other legislation. So that is going to the full house for vote tomorrow. So if you happen to be, you know, near a phone or a computer and you want to email Representative Manning and let her know that we would appreciate her support, that would be fantastic. So, you know, advocacy does work. We want to encourage everybody to participate in our project Portrait of a Ranger. That project is gathering information about skills and attitudes and competencies that we want North Bridgeville High School students to graduate with.
that we want North Bridgeville High School students to graduate with and to be able to, um, go out into the world with. So there's a survey, it's gonna be posted on our website, so you can look at that survey and provide your information and ideas. And then there's also gonna be listening sessions. I took part in a listening session last night, um, which was fantastic and, um, been telling everybody about six-word stories and maybe you've heard of six-word stories before, but I have never heard of a six-word story. I live under a rock, apparently, but it was fantastic. Um, and I don't know, I just, I'm gonna use six-word stories for everything. Um, see me later and I'll give you my next six-word story. For those of you who think I talk too much, you might appreciate me using. Yeah, it's a good idea, Kelly Boo. Okay, so then the other thing I wanted to mention is Citizens for Better Schools is our political action committee. And, um, they do a lot of our work with levies and, and promoting those when it's time to go on the ballot. But they're also trying to, um, do more outreach and do more fun things and, um, just be the cheerleaders for North Bridgeville City Schools. They're having, uh, their next meeting on October twenty ninth, I think it's a Wednesday. I don't remember what day it is. Um, it's six thirty here at the academic center in this room. Um, and they encourage anyone and everyone who wants to learn more about Citizens for Better Schools to participate that, in that. I know, um, Superintendent Cario will be there giving us a legislative update. And I know, and, oh, and a construction update as well. And I know Mr. Prit is gonna be there as well doing something. It's not a baby, he probably has a six-word story for us. But that's, those are my thoughts personally.
So you don't feel a lot, what is a six-word story?
So a six-word story, um, is used to kind of summarize, um, an activity that you're working on, right? So last night we were working on attributes, uh, that we would like to see our students graduate with, right? Skills attributes, qualities. And then, so we were each tasked individually to come up with a six-word story. That kind of combined all together. So you have six words and that's your story. Um, mine, you won't measure much. Okay, um, empathy before action creates sincere inclusion. So that's my six-word story. Well done. I hope a sword and I'll share.
How easy was that to do?
You know, it was, um, I thought it was gonna be a lot harder, but it was really, it was picking the exact words that I wanted, like I knew empathy before action. But then the last three words, I was like, okay, what is that? What does that do? What does that feed for action do? And so it was fun to do.
Thank you for sharing.
Yeah, my pleasure. The show is so fun.
Any other announcements this evening?
I don't have any other announcements. If anyone has any announcements, I.
All right, here's an opportunity for hearing of the public. If you'd like to address the Board of Education, now's your chance. You can come up to the podium, state your name and your address, and, uh, we allocate three minutes for participant up to thirty minutes.
My name's Mark Steinbrenner. I live on thirty-seven four hundred Sugar Creek Lane, and we're daughters of this wonderful district. First of all, thank you for your, for your service, Mark. I know you're the board, and I just want to thank you for your service and your dedication, district. Well, as I said, my name's Mark Steinbrenner. I live at thirty-seven four hundred Sugar Creek Lane. A while back, I spoke to and emailed board members and advocated for the district to join a lawsuit against Ed Choice vouchers. I mentioned that the public schools are under attack by the state of Ohio. And these illegal vouchers are just one phase to defund public education. That lawsuit has attached a large amount of support from public schools across Ohio. Fast forwarding to today, a Franklin County judge ruled that the voucher program is unconstitutional. Meanwhile, the Republican Party continues to defund public education. They handed two billion dollars to private schools without any oversight, while reducing money for our kids. I received emails from the district encouraging me to, you know, contact State Senator Nathan Manning about some of the funding that's coming up, some of the bills. Um, I made the call and spoke to his representatives. I explained how the majority of his constituents support public education, and he needs to vote on behalf of his constituents. I also, I also emailed Yelma about supporting public education. I stand here today to tell the public that my request have fell on deaf ears. Both of our voices in Columbus chose to defund public education. School board, administrators, teachers, and staff, as educators, we didn't choose politics, but politics has chosen us. Parents, when Columbus defunds our schools, that's an attack on your child's education. We don't need representatives of Columbus that just like public education. We need representatives in Columbus that will fight for public education. And we're in a battle right now. We're in a battle, every level, teachers being attacked, um, school boards, everybody. We have to start fighting back. Thank you.
Is there anybody else this evening? Seeing that we'll move into consent agenda. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the Consent of Gender Resolution as presented.
No.
Second. Move by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Grigsby. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Yes.
Finance report, Mr. McCarthy?
Can we just have one item this evening under the finance report? It is a resolution to approve the financial report for the month of September two thousand twenty-five, and I move to approve this item in one reading.
Second. By Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Grigsby. Is there any discussion? Uh, I would encourage everybody to look at our five-year forecast. We're fiscally solid right now, but every decision that's coming out of Columbus currently is doing everything they can to not only hurt us, but quite frankly, to bankrupt us and force us into fiscal emergency. And if those sound like strong words, we stand to lose upwards of thirty-plus million dollars. That's not just defunding public education, that's closing the doors on most buildings. I mean, we're building a brand-new high school, and if you take thirty million dollars of my money, how do I put a teacher in that brand-new high school? How do I put a gallon of water in that pool? How do I put a single athlete on the field? If they're gonna continue to go down these avenues and take our money. Uh, we're very fiscally responsible. We've proven that. We promised this community in twenty twenty, I'm sorry, twelve, that we wouldn't come back for ten years. And our current projections of Columbus would just leave us alone. We had no need to go back until thirty thirty-one. But they're quickly speeding up that timetable to our detriment and to our students' detriment. So Mr. Steinbrenner, or, uh, Mark's comments, he's a hundred percent right. This isn't just a little bit of money. They're doing everything they can to close the doors on public education. And I have no idea what they're expecting all these kids are gonna do. None. So thank you for the forecast. It looks amazing right now.
It's great now.
Hopefully, here from now, we'll still be fiscally silent. All right, sorry about that. Roll call, please.
Mrs. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Yes.
And we move to building operations report. This resolution approves a contract amendment with Hammond Construction for the removal of proper disposal of unsuitable soils discovered during the site work for this new high school project. The additional scope of work and overall costs have been reviewed and verified by Hammond Construction and then design architects. And what we cover through the project's contingency fund, I move to approve this resolution in one reading.
Second.
Move by myself, second by Mr. McCarthy. Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Rock?
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon?
Yes.
Human resource report, Mr. Haynes?
Thank you, Mr. Rock. We have several items to consider under the human resources report. One, support staff appointment. One, support staff substitute contract. One, NREA supplemental contract. One, unpaid volunteer recognition. One, certified staff contract adjustment. One, certified staff leave of absence. One, certified staff resignation. Two, support staff reservations. One, certified staff reservations. Two, support staff substitute reservation. I move to approve the human resources items in one reading.
Move by Mr. Haynes, second by Mr. Grigsby. Roll call, please.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby?
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Yes.
We'll continue with Mr. Haynes.
This evening, I'd like to acknowledge the resignation of Mrs. Joanne Chimura from the Lorraine County Joint Educational School Board of Education, effective six October twenty twenty-five. We thank her for her service and dedication. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the resignation and appoint Mr. Jeffrey Grigsby to serve out our representative in Lorraine County JBS Board remainder for the twenty twenty-five calendar. I move to approve this recommendation in one reading.
Second.
Prove by Mr. Haynes, second by Mr. McCarthy. Mr. Grigsby, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby?
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education adjourn the program meetings. Second, she's Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Haynes, roll call, please.
Mrs. McCarthy? Yes. Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby?
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.